Okay, I'd like to call to order the tri-town meeting for February 3. And the first on the agenda beyond the call to order would be the lovely, always engaging introductions for everyone who's here. And I would ask Jennifer, from my right please, would you be so kind?
Jennifer Leone, Lancaster representative to the Minuteman School Committee.
Walter Sudrowski, Selectman Lancaster.
I'm Stan Starr, the Chairman of the Board in Lancaster.
I'm Ryan McNutt, I'm Lancaster Town Administrator.
Stan Wysocki, Bolton Selectman.
Mark Sprague, Bolton Selectman. Don Lowe, Bolton Town Administrator.
Tom Frain, Bolton Selectman.
We can continue, please, if you don't mind.
George King, Assistant Superintendent of Noshova Regional.
Mark Jones, Member of the Noshova School Committee from Stowe.
Kathy Tier, Member of the School Committee from Lancaster.
Lorraine Ramasco, Bolton School Committee Rep.
Alyssa Luddy, Stowe School Committee Rep.
Anne Needle, Stowe and Bolton Independence.
Dave Lindsey, Bolton Weston.
Ted Kershner, Bolton.
Thank you. Well, I'm not going to remember anyone's name, that's okay.[75.64][75.64](laughter) One thing before we get into it, the reason there's a third, there's not a third Selectman from Lancaster here this evening is because our friend Eugene Pete Kristoff passed away about three weeks ago, three and a half weeks ago. He serviced our town for many, many years, decades of service, and we had a very nice memorial service for him over the past weekend. And our Board decided to wait until the regular election in May rather than filling it with such a short timeframe involved. So, just out of respect to Pete, I wanted to make that announcement. Our first order of agenda of business is that of Minuteman Regional. And our friend Jennifer, former Selectman in Lancaster, I served with Jennifer a couple of years ago. And Jennifer, would you be so kind to enlighten us in terms of where we are and where we're heading and so?
Well, where we are now is the town meetings to approve the new regional agreement. As of now, three towns have voted it and approved it. Stowe, Acton, and Arlington, right? Next Monday night, I think there's at least five, maybe six. Tuesday night has three. We go all the way to the 24th of February where Foxborough will vote.
Next Monday's Super Monday.
Next Mon- (laughter) Next Monday is Super Monday. And that, I think, we'll know a lot more next Monday where we stand. I think that that's going to be a big milestone for us to know whether Belmont, Carlisle votes on Tuesday. When does Conquer? Conquer's soon.
I think Conquer's on a Saturday. Many times they're on a Saturday.
Oh, they, okay. So I think as a town meeting on Tuesday night in Lancaster, we'll know Bolton votes on Monday night. We'll know a lot better where we stand. I think that the last two are Foxborough and...
I think Foxborough's the last.
Foxborough's on the 24th, but there's somebody that's just the week before. There's two outliers that are waiting at the end. We'll also know who's voted to withdraw. None of the towns yet have voted that are on the list to withdraw. So the seven communities, none of those have voted yet, but some of those vote Monday night, Tuesday night. So I think we'll have a much better idea of where the towns stand fiscally coming up for the...
Any idea what the odds are? What are the Vegas odds of all 16 saying yes?
For the regional agreement, it all depends on who shows up to town meeting. I mean, it's a, it's a, Stowe voted unanimously for it, Acton voted un- or, I think there's three dissenters, Arlington was overwhelmingly for it. You know, I think, it makes sense. It's, the old agreement is non-functional as far as the towns are concerned because you, there's no mechanism for withdrawing. There's no mechanism for a capital project, one town because it's the dictator. You know, with the new regional agreement, it's more of a democracy. You can, you can still have a capital project with a town disagreeing. So I think for Lancaster, it makes sense fiscally. As I've, you know, explained to the Board many times, the new formula for capital assessments makes sense for Lancaster because we are so much the bottom end fiscally of the, of the district. But even going forward, if, you know, a new vocational school opens up in Clinton or something, you know, we have a much better option of withdrawing and getting into a new district if that was something we wanted to do with a new, with a new regional agreement. The old one, you're never getting out. I mean, you need all 16 communities to vote you out, and that's almost impossible, I would say.
It's a 40-year agreement? That goes back 40 years?
Um, the original is '72. Lancaster got in in '79. And the reason at the time that Lancaster chose Minuteman is because the options just, it was Worcester, Minuteman, I think Monty Tech might have been around, but Aspen certainly wasn't. And it was the best choice for us at the time. At the time, the capital assessment formula made sense because the state paid 90% of anything that you were building, so who cares what the other 10%, how, you know, if it was evenly distributed, that made sense. Now, with towns paying over 60%, a ability to pay formula certainly makes sense if, you know, Lancaster's average home price is $290,000 and Weston's is $1 million, they should pick up a little bit more of the capital assessment than Lancaster.
And the MSBA formula is dropping. Right now, if this project goes forward, we'll get 44.75% reimbursement. If we got out of the queue, if this was, if the project itself wasn't passed by the end of June and we had to resubmit and get back in the queue, the starting point's 31%. So you lose...
And once again, that's of, of approved...
Of reimbursable expenses.
Reimbursable things, which, you know, as we've found out, is with this project, $40 million less than the actual project cost.
Yeah, the effective reimbursement rate's a little north of 32%. I don't remember exactly what it is.
Yeah. So, and, and I think for the town meetings to vote the new building project in their annual town meetings in May, we need the new regional agreement. Without it, I think the school committee goes straight to the district-wide ballot.
Any other offerings to, are there any questions that anyone has relative to where we are? Jennifer's been a very diligent data.
Yes. Do we know if any of the Boards of Selectmen in any of the towns have voted to recommend the opposition?
No.
So as far as we know, all the Boards have...
I have not seen an official recommendation from Belmont, but their Boards of Selectmen were certainly involved in the process. And it's, I think the, the big question's going to be what towns vote the regional agreement and then vote to get out. Carlisle was talking about changing them up and vote to get out and then vote the regional agreement. But they were told they can't because you can't vote something that doesn't exist. But if you can't, if you haven't approved the regional agreement, you can't vote for the, you know, under the provision that allows you to get out. So, um, yeah, so there's been some people trying to gerrymander it so that if they don't vote to get out, then they don't vote the regional agreement. I, I, I don't know. I, it's gonna, it's gonna be who shows up to these meetings. I mean, Sudbury, they want out. The Board of Selectmen want out. They have 26 kids currently in the school. They have 16 freshman applications already for this year, for next year. So if they have 40-some-odd kids going to school there, 40 kids, which is what Lancaster sends, and they aren't in a region, those 40 kids could choose to go to six different schools, and they would have to send them there. They would have to pay for the transportation. They can, yeah. If you don't have, if you're not in a region and you don't offer the services, you have to pay. Lancaster sends a kid to Walpole for the North Fork Aggie. It costs us $60,000 a year for her to go to school. Because she wanted a program that wasn't offered at Minuteman. Not being in a district means you can choose, as a student, you can apply to any school you want. So they can apply to Aspen, they can apply to Noshova, they can, if they get in, the town has to pay to get them there. And that's a lot of students to transport. But Sudbury wants out, and that's going to be their problem if that's, if that's where they end up. But for, for a period of time, Minuteman, I think, can accommodate all these soon-to-be-out-of- potentially-out-of-district students. But I think with the new building, if the new building project happens, the smaller size, the more up-to-date equipment, the more robust program of development, I think the in-district towns are going to start taking over those positions. And I think the out-of-district students are going to have fewer and fewer spots.
But if you're a town that wants to get out of the district or is at least strongly considering getting out of the district, there's no logical reason in the world for you not to vote for the new agreement.
Right. You have to if you're going to get out. Right. So I think Belmont isn't going to get out. They're not on the list. I think they're a wild card. I'm not sure how they're going to vote. And they vote Monday night. Anybody else that feels, you know, Whalen could just be contrary, but they want out. They've already voted to get out under the existing...
I think the two most likely towns to get out would be Sudbury and Whalen if anyone gets out.
Foxborough. It depends on who shows up to town meeting.
Right.
Right. There was information that Foxborough had looked at, right?
And Carlisle apparently has looked at joining Noshova as well.
But certainly Dover and Weston wouldn't get out. There'd be no reason for them to get out now that we've, now that we've proposed to waive the five-student minimum, right?
And the other problem with getting out is you can send your students as an out-of-district, but then you don't have a vote on school committee. You lose any kind of authority and any ability to direct what's happening within the school. So, you know, I think, and, and I think that the schools that are looking, the districts, the towns that are looking to join Noshova are kind of kicking the can down the road because Noshova's going to need a new school, you know, not, in the not-so-distant future. So, not Noshova, no, no, no. Noshova Valley Tech, sorry.[701.82][701.82](laughter) I'm in the Voc Tech stuff. I'm out of the...
And I, I had a conversation with the Superintendent of Monty Tech, and they had also expressed that, you know, other towns had contacted them, but they had also informed them that it's been a long time since they've reviewed their space needs. Monty Tech could be a few years away from some type of capital building project.
So, and the, and the schools that have had, have newer schools are smaller. They've been building them smaller, and they're full and they have waiting lists. You know, Aspen has a waiting list. Even Monty Tech has a waiting list. So I think the towns that are planning to get out aren't thinking 10, 15 years from now. I think they might be having fiscal problems shipping their kids all over the state in order to accommodate Voc, Voc Ed. And it's an important option for kids that don't flourish at a conventional high school. And it's been shown that there are kids that just do such amazing things at these Voc Tech schools that would have crashed and burned at their regular high schools. They just wouldn't have managed. So I think it's an expensive thing. Hopefully, the Governor has made some overtures about supporting Voc Tech education a little bit more, you know, but, you know, the, the state doesn't have a whole lot of extra cash either, so...
Yeah. He proposed an additional $75 million to the budget.
And it's hard, though, given the district that we do have, to justify, you know, if you have Weston and Dover and Carlisle, and do they really deserve a lot of extra cash for, for buildings and programs when they have, you know, Lincoln already spends $24,000 per student on their regular education, so, so they spend 28 on Voc Ed.[822.23][822.23](laughter) You know, it's not, for Lancaster, which is, I think, last time I checked, is about 12, we spend 24 for Voc Ed. So it's a huge difference between the two. But we'll see. But I think for Bolton and Lancaster, the next week's town meetings, the new regional agreement is what I'm focusing on. What happens after that and how we make the argument for the new building comes in March and April and May.
Are there any more questions or comments for Jennifer, or any general comments? There being none, I, I did notice, I was, an article was in the Boston Globe West Magazine about 10 days ago, and the headline being "The Seven Towns Debate Leaving the Minuteman Regional School District." I've got about a dozen copies of the two-page. You need to be a dog to be able to read the font, but it's, it's small. But if you would like, I'm going to leave it on here, and you can welcome yourself to looking at some summaries there of that same project. Jennifer, thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to say, doesn't he?
Okay. Mr. Hox?
Yes.
Would you like to join us up here? We have reserved seats for you.
Oh. Name plate? Did you steal it from Stowe?
You have to bring your own, Don. Okay. Our next agenda item is the discussion of the Noshova Regional School District budget. Mr. King, are you here to engage or?
I think I'll yield to the Chairman.
Okay. Lorraine, please.
Okay. So we, we got a good, solid start. We kicked off our process on Monday, last Monday, the 25th. And at that time, the Administration, George, and Dr. Bates came to us with what their first initial talks were about it. Prior to that, Dr. Bates and George and I had met, and George kind of gave me the layup. If nothing changed, this is where we'd be. And I'll, I'll share this with you now. That initial increase in the assessment was 7.82, understanding total, understanding that that was something that was not going to be sustainable. George went back and looked at some efficiencies that were not, had caused no pain. And after he took a look at that, he came to us at the January 25th meeting and presented us with the next iteration, which is 5.38. We had a long discussion, I think it was over a four-hour meeting, asked a lot of questions. Dr. Bates and George are taking back those questions. And this coming Monday, we have a follow-up meeting to work on this a little bit more. I think we had a good, solid start on it. I think it's, it's too soon to make any decisions on where we're going to land. We've got a lot of discussions to have. But I do think that one of the, the things that, that the school committee, Finance Subcommittee and with George should be commended on is the transparency of the process this year and the consistency of the working relationship. And I think that George and Kathy Tier and Neil Darcy and Mark Jones have really done a great job in identifying what the process is and what happens and when everybody comes in. And then at the end of the process, we will have a final budget book that many districts in the state have. We haven't had one, so it's a first for us, and we got a taste of it last Monday. It is very clearly laid out. It provides narrative for the expenditures and revenue and discussion points. And that has been a strong collaborative effort. So we're moving forward. We have work to do. The next several weeks, we're going to continue to do the work. But we, I think we all feel pretty good about the process and where we're going and the collaboration at this point. So if you have any questions for me, which I'm sure you do...
Kathy, do you feel as comfortable as Lorraine does from the Lancaster perspective?
So I...
I'd look behind your furze, yeah.[1099.02][1099.02](laughter) I always do that.
Yes, I feel like the process is a solid one. I've gone with the other school committee rep to the Finance Subcommittee of Lancaster. We met with them once and we discussed the process, trying to make sure we're all on the same page of when everything happens and when we expect information. We've sent, I think, four documents to them of subsets of, of information of, you know, they're preliminary and they're subject to change, but they're kind of the buckets of revenue and expenses. And we, we sent that and forwarded it on with, you know, an explanation and knowing that it's preliminary and subject to change. But, you know, we're doing a lot of work, trying to make sure we understand it, where is the money going, and, you know, with George's help, understanding what can be done.
Well, to all those people involved in the process, many, many hours of volunteering, you know, thank you, if this isn't already stated. It's a thankless job, and we all know that. I thought everybody sitting in here has parts of a thankless job. It's got to get done, and that's what we're here for. So thank you. Are there any questions from anybody relative to the presentation, Don?
Yeah. What, I know the, the numbers, state of flux and 5.38 won't be where it ends up. If it, for the sake of discussion, if it did, has anybody looked at how that translates into the local assessments?
Well, that is the assessment.
For each town?
Yeah.
And each town is the same this year?
They're much closer than they have been this year, but what derives that is the population, which has been pretty similar, and also the minimum local contributions that come out of the budget, of the Governor's budget. So they're not exact, but they're similar.
What, if I might, what, what changed from last year? I know Stowe went up substantially more than the other two towns last year.
Right.
Are they all just voluntarily chipping in to help us out?
No, the population, the rolling, the rolling population leveled off. There was a spike year for Stowe, or, I don't remember off the top of my head. That or the combination of, the two things that impact the, that differential are the minimum local contribution, which is 50% of the, based on formula, based on 50% of the community's equalized valuation, 50% of the community's income. And then the other thing is the population in the, in the schools. Still has the biggest population, the schools, but, you know, reasonable.
So we're getting a deal.
I think so.
Thank you, guys.
Just one quick question before I get, I'm sorry. George, can you estimate per, let's say, $500,000 value home, what impact a single percent would be on the increase on that part of the budget? Can you ballpark that at all?
So I'm sorry, can you assess that one with that?
Okay. What would be the impact to a taxpayer in a half-a-million-dollar-valued home per 1% of an increase of a budget last year for the Noshova Regional School District?
I can't do that because I'm not really that familiar with the taxation in each of the towns. So it would be different in each town.
It would vary in each town.
Okay. But there's, okay, yeah, I, I understand.
So, so since we don't directly tax them, I just don't have that information.
And I'm not holding anybody to anything, but I'm just trying to understand relative to the process last year. I believe the initial assessments that were sent to the towns last year were their votes, five, maybe 5.5%. And then after discussions with the school committee and the, you know, town administrators and the Superintendent, various people, that these eventually came down to about 3.3 or 3.4%? Don, if my memory's serving?
Yeah, we were about 3.24, I think.
Yeah. So...
We were more than one.
Correct. But I'm just saying that this is, this is still a typical first number that we get.
Yeah. And to answer whoever asked the question, I think it was, it was Don. I mean, we haven't even considered workshopping the percentage that's on the table now because we know it's not going to be the final percentage. It's coming down. So I, I personally, I'm not reacting to anything until I know the number's real and I know these numbers aren't real. They'll be lower than they are now.
Yeah. No, I agree. That's where I'm at.
Any other questions, comments? Dave?
Yeah. The 5.28, if school spending is 5/8 of a town's budget, that would mean the school spending alone would raise total town spending by 3 and 5/8. You get 2.5% from cost, 2.5% from new growth, you have to cut the rest of the town at that level. Now, maybe we're going to do a lot better on revenues, maybe just more your growth or some other aspect. But if revenues are only 3%, the towns have to be cut. And your earlier question, the school budget is about, well, there are roughly 5,000 single-family homes in the whole three-town district. So $1 million, that would be $200 a home. Now, I think it would be a fair amount, less than that because the businesses have to absorb some of it and so forth, but it might be in the vicinity of under 25, 150, just a guess.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, actually, so is it going up? Well, right now, the new number is 5.38%, but is that 5.38% of the budget, which is roughly $54 million bucks?
That's the assessment. The budget goes up about 3.5%.
Okay.
The assessment's almost always going to be about more than the budget.
All right. So the assessment, the assessment is 5.38, but the, the amount by a town is roughly, what, 3.1?
No. The budget, the base budget is up in the 3. something percent range, okay? The assessment is up 5%. Because remember, the assessment is approximately 75 to 80% of our revenue, okay?
Right.
For the most part, like everything else, for the most part, this changes occasionally and somewhat, for the most part, the rest of our revenues are pretty stable because Chapter 70 is the biggest part of our local revenue, and that probably goes up, you know, maybe $50,000 a year at best. So therefore, the increases in the budget, for the most part, are reflected upon the assessment. So if the budget goes up $1 million on a $50 million budget, that's, you know, that's a 2% budget increase, okay? But that's going to be 2.5% assessment increase because the numbers, because the full increase is going to the smaller number. So the percentage is automatically higher just by that, by where you're at.
Okay.
Inflation for the latest twelve months is under 1%. So even 3.5 for the budget and definitely 5.3 for the assessment sounds pretty high. People on Social Security got no increase at all last year because inflation was under 1%. So I don't know what percent of the towns are on Social Security, but that makes paying a big increase in local taxes pretty difficult.
Point to counterpoint. Any more input, comments?
Yeah, one other one. Just because, I probably should know the answer to this since I was sitting with your colleagues or some former colleagues on the Bargaining Committee, what, a year and a half ago, I guess? When you, when the Noshova teachers' contract, I was the Selectman Representative to that process under the statute. And the question comes is, what, are we in the beginning, is '17 the third year of that contract?
Yeah. And we'll start working on the next contract.
And that's a 2-2 split, if I remember right? 2% first and 2% halfway through the year?
2.1.
2.1?
No. 2, 2% of 1% split.
2% of 1%.
Right.
Okay. So it's 3% cost and a 4% raise in base.
No. It's a 3% raise in the base and 2.5% cost.
Right. Got it. Do you understand that?
Welcome.
Yes. I am sorry I'm late. Just stopped to check the board outside. But I see the Mayor of Stowe is already here.
I only came up here because there didn't need a Stowe rep, because I'm not here.
Brian, you just sent time for adjournment.
I moved to adjourn.
We are, we are in the process of discussing the, the budget. And if there's any other questions, do we move on to the next topic? Are we okay? Everybody happy, relatively speaking? Okay. Thank you all for the, for the input. Let's see. Update on Superintendent search. I defer, Lorraine, is that your?
Yes, please. So, so we have been aggressively working on this Superintendent search. In fact, we just came from, from a meeting to review that. We've held, we, also MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, is our consultant in the search. They have held seven focus groups in the schools with community members, and those focus groups wrapped up last week. They also, we did a community-wide survey for anyone and everyone. We got the word out everywhere we could. So we got the results back from that, and we're just getting ready to go through those results to see what they say. And basically, what we're looking for from the focus groups and the surveys is what do you think the qualities and the characteristics are in an ideal Superintendent? So that will help form the, the opinion that the school committee has for the ultimate characteristics and qualities that we're looking for. We just finalized our brochure. That is going to be designed and go to print by the end of the week. We will be distributing tomorrow the application for anyone and everyone who's interested in participating in the screening committee. We're looking for 12 people representing the schools, teaching, administration, central office, parents, community at large, town official, and two school committee reps. So we're really getting all this together. We are expecting to have our... We are expecting to have our screening orientation for those people who are selected on March 9th. Through the month of March, we're going to be entertaining resumes. The screening committee will decide which of the resumes they want to forward out to the school committee and recommend as candidates. And then, once they've done their work, we'll have, in March 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, the school committee will interview the candidates. And we hope to have someone in place by the end of April, as far as the decision made, excuse me, so that they can start on July 1st. It's an accelerated timeline, and we will make sure that the person that we ultimately hire is the right person for the district. If we need to take more time, we will do that as well. Our hope is that we find someone by June 30th, but, June 30th. But if not, Dr. Bates has committed to staying with us for another year, which is a great safety net. He's done a great job for us so far. Yes.
I mean, this may or may not be applicable. I just think where it was in the area, then the Shoba Tech search and how they had picked a candidate, but then he withdrew and his stated reason was something about the search taking too long. I mean, that may or may not be the actual reason, but that was the public reason. Have you guys been able to review that process and see where maybe they had some glitches?
Well, I did look at it, and I don't really want to comment on whatever their political situation was. But I don't think that our situation is going to take too long. I think we're going to be able, I mean, the month of March and, and April is it. So I don't think it will take too long for us to find someone. There was something else I wanted to say, Ryan, and I can't remember what it was, but if you ask me another question, I'm sure I'll remember it. You can think of something.
Is your process going to entail site visits when you get down to the final couple of people?
Yes.
So you're hoping some of you get an applicant from Honolulu then?
No, no. I'm too busy. I don't have the time. But yeah, we will be going to, it's going to be kind of a both ways. So the final candidates will come and tour our district, and then we will go and tour their districts as a school committee.
If it's Hawaii, can I?
You cannot go to Hawaii. We can't afford it.
The junket candidate.
Maybe they, maybe we could schedule a night when Triton's meeting.
No, we don't, we like these meetings now.
So bring your candidate along and let them take a look.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay, any other comments, input, ma'am?
I know, I know, starting your agenda this evening, you were talking about who of the school committee would be selected for the search committee.
Yes.
And what they'd be winners.
Nicole Odeker from Stowe.
Okay.
Neil Darcy from Bolton, and Kathy Codien as the alternate.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any input? Any other source? There being none, we'll move on to new business and announcements. Does anyone have any new business and/or announcements at this time?
I'd suggest only one new item of business, since we don't have anything else to put it under here on the agenda. And that's setting a meeting date on our next meeting, which should, like, do we go, are you, does it go back to you or does it skip to us?
Bolton.
Bolton, okay. I defer to you then.
Brian?
For the record, I can't make a 6:30 meeting on Wednesday night. Somebody's got to get the board of Boy Scouts.
Was this meeting 6:30 because of the library facility and its hours? Is that why it got moved up?
I'm not sure if they had a play in it or not. I don't know where the 6:30 part they came from, but I, I don't have an answer to that. I don't know. I know they want us out of here in about 50 minutes, but sure to that.
When does this 6:50 be the first meeting of March?
Is it typically, Brian, is it typically 7 o'clock? Is that what's the, by the standard?
Yeah, as long as I can remember.
Yeah, okay. No, I, I have no objections to that time.
Well, while they're discussing that, I just wanted to make an announcement about our workshop this weekend.
Okay, sure.
So, so the first one stays the second, the second one stays the night.
We might be meeting on Thursdays.
Yeah, I think ours is on Thursday anyway, in March.
Committee of correspondents, I didn't have it on. So March 2nd?
What was that?
3/2 at, 3/2 at 6:30, right?
March, March 2nd. March 2nd at 7, so. That's fine, I can skip it.
7 in Bolton.
March 2nd at 7 in Bolton at the White Building.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for bringing it up, Brian. I wasn't aware of any. I just know that we maybe want to give ourselves a little more time, if nothing else, because they put the cats out in Lancaster at 8 o'clock. That's where we are. The other item, the next item, and I'll defer to you, Brian. I'm glad you showed up tonight. Committees of correspondence, I think that was your request to have an adjourned item.
Yes, I just thought that it would be, just after, I don't want to hold up the adjournment. It's been something, it's something I've been speaking about ever since I got here tonight. But maybe I can, the representatives from the three towns after the meeting.
After the, okay.
After this meeting.
Ryan wanted to make an announcement too that-
Yeah, I just want to remind the folks at home and everybody in the room, we'll be having a workshop this Saturday at the Lancaster Town Hall Auditorium, starting at 1:00 P.M. And this is related to our Prescott building renovation project. The entire design team, the architects, the project manager, our finance director, myself, we'll be giving a presentation about the building project and the related warrant article that will be on our special town meeting for February 9th. So I encourage the public to come to Lancaster Town Hall Saturday at 1:00 P.M. and partake in this discussion.
And more specifically, that's for the Prescott building, which is the old high school building that sits on the common, a very historic building. The attempt to make a conversion over to offices for the town employees who are currently residing in a basement for many, many years and don't belong there much longer than necessary. The original plans are going back to four years. The original costs were estimated, underestimated at 3.2 million. Four years later, and getting more realistic prices as best we can discern, it's up to 4.4 million. The 3.2 has been approved. The additional 1.3 approximately is going to go before special town meeting next Tuesday. And that's the background on that. And hopefully, the townspeople will allow that $36 increase to their $300,000 home, which is the average in Lancaster, to be voted on and unfavorable.
It's 75 cents a week.
75 cents a week.
Is that going to be subject to a debt explosion?
No.
So that's just a little town history there too. So we'll meet thereafter, after this meeting, for Brian's request. Is there any other business to come before this meeting?
Just one other. Can we have Mr. Jones, since you have been active, you and I, but you more than I, in the space task force, can you just kind of give a little update for the people that might not know about our status?
Sure. The task force is, at the moment, going through the process of drafting their recommendation which they will bring to the school committee. The sense of the meeting is that they wish to recommend that the school committee put forward a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority and have, have a conversation begun with the, with the building authority about what appropriate response can be made to the perceived needs at the high school. And the fundamental things that have been learned is that it appears to be somewhere in the vicinity is our ability to have about 10 additional classrooms and perhaps other ancillary, common area improvements to the high school to meet the current population of the school for the current curriculum and program. So when, when that document's been delivered to the school committee, then they are discharged of their duties and it's up to the school committee to decide what to do about the recommendation.
So you'll take off one hat and put on another. That, with the task force's meeting tomorrow night, is that, is that likely to be the last meeting, or is there going to be one more?
It's hard to predict. I, I would suspect there's going to be yet another, but it looks like the draft is well along the way towards completion.
Okay, and we had had, there had been some discussion there, but for the benefit of folks here and not to put back any of your colleagues and yourself into a corner. Is there any likelihood that the window for applying to MSBA for this round is open January 8th to March 8th, if I recall correctly?
It's April.
April, okay. April 8th. Is there any likelihood that a application, SOI, could be entered into this year?
We have to talk about it. We haven't even seen the draft yet. We need to review it. And I think probably, you know, I, I talked with Bob, and he and I met with Dr. Bates, and we're going to try to target the end of February to at least get a look at the document, review it, have them present, and then we'll probably have them come back in, so it'll give us a chance to deliberate over it. But I don't feel comfortable making a commitment without the committee having a chance to review and discuss. But, but we're entertaining, you know, the recommendations they've spent. Some of us have been on it, well, you were on it longer than I was, but two and a half years doing the research, the analysis, and it's a really solid effort, so we owe it to that group and to the community to, to review.
If I can make just kind of an editorial comment, because it won't show up otherwise. The, when, when the committee, the task force, excuse me, voted December, I think, December meeting, the recommendation that Mark just referred to, in other words, to rec, for this, our task force to recommend to the school committee an SOI be filed. The initial discussion of that before it was put to a vote was that the, the recommendation was to encourage or recommend the school committee file this year, this round. There was quite a bit of discussion, and that was then changed because I felt it was more properly the purview of the school committee to decide the timing. But even with that, so the motion was, as Mark just reported it, when that came to a vote or a discussion before the vote, I expressed some reservations about it. And you can take this input from one little corner of the district, from one representative in the district, not a position of the board. But I felt, and still do, that it would be rushing things to, for what it's worth, to you, to get that in this round by April 8th of this year, for, for a number of reasons. Not to say that there isn't a need somewhere down the road, but you have a kind of a new, a new focus on the school committee. You're working together differently than in the past. You've got an interim superintendent that wasn't even on board when that vote was taken. You've got frankly sticker shock in a lot of towns. You know, our center school bill is just starting to rumble into people's pockets. And, well, I think even more compelling for me was the fact that the, the task force, what, two meetings ago, entered into a contract or authorized, or the school committee has authorized a contract now, I guess, that not-
The population study?
Yes, a demographic enrollment study. So I think it kind of put in the cart before the horse for me to see an application go in before we all, you all particularly, have all of that information kind of digested. So for those reasons, I was suggesting that, that we not, we, the task force, not recommend. Just, we were designed, we were created, it was a little shaky as to why we were created, and the author of the creation was no longer with us. But my feeling was, we were not designed to, appointed to designate solutions to the school committee, but just data on, on the space needs. And I think that's what the committee's properly been focused on. So for those reasons, there was a quorum present. I voted no on the, on the issue, on that, because I didn't want to see it go as a recommend. My, my feeling was just turn it over to you guys and let you guys handle it. But the minutes don't reflect that because the majority decided not to amend the minutes to reflect my position. So I just wanted to make a play. Thank you.
Thank you, Donnie.
Mr. Chairman, this, with all due respect, is an awfully detailed discussion for something that's not even on the agenda.
Ken? Well, the cheese is almost gone. We're into our agenda. Would look forward to an adjournment, Brian.
I move to adjourn. Second.
We are adjourned.